To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling, here.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Heinz.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
And Trustee Bond.
Here.
Alright, we're all here. Public participation, we have the public hearing on the tax levy. With that, I'll open the public hearing and invite any member of the public that wishes to address the board on that item specifically to come forward, sign in, and address the board. I thought Judy was coming up to come down. We will have first reading on that tonight and look to approve that at a future meeting in December. This is the last chance for anybody that wants to speak on the public hearing. Alright, close the public hearing and then move on to item B, which is the public hearing on Montgomery Place Apartments Amendment to the Annexation Agreement, which I understand we are, I guess, do we open it?
We would like to open it and then continue it to a future meeting.
Alright, so open the public hearing and then table, do we need a motion?
No, you don't need a motion, but you do need to announce exactly where, when, and the time.
Okay.
On such and such date, such and such time.
So that would be December 11th.
At?
At this next meeting.
At 7:00.
7:00 p.m. And that, we don't need, I thought we were thinking about doing that as a special board meeting?
Well, what we'd like to ask the board to do is meet when the committee of the whole was scheduled for December 19th as a special board meeting so that we could take action on items.
I get you. Okay.
Can we go through those dates one more time, please?
Yep, so the public hearing for the Montgomery Place Apartments, the Amendment to the Annexation Agreement, it will be continued to December 11th at 7:00 p.m. in this room.
Which is a regularly scheduled board meeting?
Yes. Sorry for the confusion.
And then after that, if the board's willing, we would like to ask for a special meeting on December 19th, which would normally have been your committee of the whole meeting date. The reasoning behind that is because we will obviously not meet on Christmas.
You're not gonna be here?
I'll be here if you need me to.
Alright, any objections to that in the public hearing? And we don't need a motion on that?
No.
Okay. Moving on to item C, we have a public hearing on the Huntington Chase Annexation Agreement Amendment.
This would be the same scenario where we would ask that you open and continue this till December 11th with hopefully action on December 19th.
At 7:00 p.m. here.
At 7:00 p.m. Any objections?
None.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was any, just by show of hands, was any member of the public here wishing to address the board on either of those tonight? I would've felt really guilty otherwise, so thank you. Alright, moving on to the fun part, we have the River Run donations. With that, Engineer Wallers.
I want to go through a little recap of the race and then we have some checks to hand out that we'd like some assistance for. And on the screen is a compilation of photos from the 14th Annual River Run. We had another successful run. It was well-attended. We had over 150 runners. People seemed to enjoy it. This year, we did something a little different with our trophies. We used river rocks, engraved river rocks, which I've given the board members samples of. And I think people liked them. Some people always like to have a trophy, but these are kinda different for, you know, those things. So, next year will be the 15th Annual Silver Run Special Award. We haven't figured out what that's gonna be yet, but it'll be exciting. So, as we've done in the past, I just wanted to cover, what really makes this event worthwhile is the amount of monies we've raised for charities. And we try to donate our proceeds to local charities or organizations that we think can benefit from it. So this year, we have three organizations that we've donated to, the Montgomery Rotary Club, of course, doing some good work in the community, and I happen to be on their Rotary Club as well. We have the Montgomery VFW Post. I don't think we can say enough about those folks, so we're really happy to give them a donation. And then Hesett House, which is another worthy organization that I think is important for all of us to support. So, it's rewarding to be able to give back some money to those organizations to benefit our community, so that's really why we're doing the run at the end of the day. We had 33 sponsors this year, which is a record for us, and I just want to read those off quickly because I think it's important. So on the gold level, we had Saloon BBQ, Rush Copley Healthplex, Lacon Company, Jakita Food Market, Caterpillar Incorporated, Ozinga, Illinois, Village of Montgomery, and Engineering Enterprises. Then our silver sponsors were Spear Financial, DVF, Illinois Services, All Steel Credit Union, Heartland Bank and Trust, Wobonzie Community College, Blaine Farm and Fleet, Lion LLC, Rosati's and Montgomery Pizzas Pub, Dunkin' Donuts. So those were our silver sponsors. And then our remaining sponsors were Frank Marshall Electric, Scott Eye Care, Fox Valley Building Trades, Coffin Trucks, Horizon Management, Third Millennial Associates, West Suburban Dental Care, Old Second National Bank, Fox Valley Park District, Panera Bread of Oswego, Northwestern Delnor House Health and Fitness Center, Dick's Sporting Goods, United Facilities, Vance America, Naperville Running Company, and Clark, Friends of the River Run. So, it just shows that we get some really good support from the community, which is, again, it's rewarding and it really makes the event worthwhile and, you know, gives us some ability to give back some money. So, we're happy tonight to have representatives from Hesett House, VFW, and Rotary here, and I'd ask them to come down. We'd like to get a photo with the mayor and have the big checks handed out and go in that direction, so.
Awesome.
Once again, thanks, and thanks to all the volunteers and staff. And the presentation, I think, is on the village's website. If not, maybe we can ask that it be put on there. And we do cover, we do have support from the Montgomery Fire Department, from the Police Department, Public Works, village staff, and other folks. So, it's really a good community effort. We have a good group of volunteers every year, so, thanks again.
Thank you. I can't say enough about how smoothly the event runs. And about the three organizations, you know, that the River Run proceeds are going to this year, I know this is a small fraction of your operating cost for some of you, but certainly even more than that, your purpose is felt in the community. The work that you do is very much appreciated. So, anytime you need anything from the village, you know where to come. Thank you. Alright, we'll move on, and you can stay, but you don't have to. We won't be offended. I'll move on to public comment. This is a two-minute opportunity where you can talk about anything, any of the items that nobody wanted to talk about before, or something else. Alright. Move on to the consent agenda. I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the village board meeting of November 13th, any executive session minutes of November 13th, accounts payable through November 20th.
Still moved. Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And Trustee Heinz.
Here.
That carries 6-0. Thank you. Under Items for Separate Action, we have Ordinance 1785, adopting the tax levy, and this is the first reading. Director Van Born.
Thank you, President Brawley. The proposed tax levy was announced at the November 13th meeting, and Notice of Public Hearing was published on November 16th in Oswego, Leger. The proposed general levy request totals $2,237,352. This excludes the 2.1% tax cap allowed for existing buildings in the community. As the village president stated, this is the first reading, so no action is necessary tonight. I can answer any questions the board may have.
The announcement of the public hearing created some confusion in some of the public about what did the 5.2% increase really mean. It was widely interpreted to mean we were increasing property tax by 5.2%. Could you spend a moment and kind of clarify the meaning of that figure and what it means to the public?
Sure. The 5.2%, because of the timing of having the meeting announcing the tax levy, that tax levy announcement in the paper includes the extra 2.1% because we have to get it into the paper on a certain date. And so, there are two pieces to the tax levy increase. One is that which would take place on existing buildings, and a second piece is that which would be caused by new construction within the community. The village board at the last meeting asked staff to take that existing building out. And so, the, what results is approximately 3.1, around 3%, 3.1% increase, but it should not be on existing buildings. It should be on the new construction only. It doesn't necessarily mean that one neighbor versus the next, their tax bill may go up or go down a little bit. It just depends upon the assessed value that the township assessor is going to place on one home versus another home, or one business versus another business.
It has nothing to do with what we're doing. The Village of Montgomery has not raised taxes in the last four years, five years.
Is it four or five?
It's five, yeah. I apologize. So, we have not raised taxes in five years. What this is all about is new construction.
So if there was a vacant lot, let's say, and there was a new single-family home built, we're trying to capture that small amount that we would otherwise not get. That's the new construction.
Correct.
Anybody that lives in Montgomery, we're not, we're not, we're trying not to increase their tax bill.
Correct.
It is unbelievably confusing that we levy an amount that gets distributed amongst people, that we don't really dictate how it gets distributed, all based on your EAV relative to your neighbors. But we do our best to hold that down every year. Alright. Is there any more comments for staff tonight or in the next few weeks? The second reading will be at the December 11th meeting. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Alright. Thank you. Move on to item B, which is the KenCom Dispatch Services Agreement. Deputy Chief Sanders.
Thank you, village president, board members. In your packet, in August, the village board approved an assignment, an amendment Dispatch Services Agreement in anticipation of the finalized KenCom Public Safety Dispatch Intergovernmental Agreement and related documents. As previously documented or discussed, those items are now submitted for board review and approval. Those items include the Montgomery Police Department and Kendall County Emergency Phone Service and Communication Board Intergovernmental Agreement, specifically the Tyler New World Security and Operations, Montgomery Police Department Kendall County Emergency Phone Service and Communications Board Intergovernmental Agreement, Tyler New World Licensing and Maintenance Fees, and Attachment A, which has the Tyler New World Law Enforcement Records Management System and Cost Sharing Agreement. So, with our current dispatch agreement, there's a lot of moving pieces. That's why you have three different documents here. But ultimately, what we wanted to do was keep our dispatch agreement and have it coincide with our records management and software agreements that were the both at 10-year increments. So that's why we came back, so that we were able to submit our best practices and what we wanted, and now we have a, an agreement that's the same for all the municipalities within KenCom. So, moving forward, we have a 10-year for our dispatch services, also our records management software and licensing, and that's what those documents are in front of you.
Everything's ending at the same time?
Yes, everything coincides. That's why I had to come back. It would make no sense to have one end and then we are tied in a different way. So, everything's tied together now, and we were very comfortable with it. It all pen's final review by the village attorney, but we're comfortable with everything. All municipalities have had a chance to review it with their legal and submitted their items for discussion, and this is the final product that has come back for all, for us and other municipalities.
I just, I know through conversations that I've had outside of the boardroom with you and Chief Myers, there was a lot of behind-the-scenes work done to get us on the same verbiage as all the other municipalities and keep us on an even playing field as much, best as possible. So, I just want to recognize all of those efforts that went into all of that work on your guys' end.
Yeah, thank you very much, and that's true. We had the Sheriff Baird and Chiefs that were also involved from other municipalities help out with that, which has brought us all to a level playing field. So, we're very comfortable with that.
I know when we originally switched to KenCom, there were some coverage issues. I think is putting it nicely. Are we having any coverage issues? Have we had any coverage issues in the last year?
We have had several issues. We have documented several and addressed several with them. They've done some testing. But as we move forward, the infrastructure improvements that we're gonna be holding them accountable for, and what we're working together should definitely improve areas that we need improvement on.
How are we holding them accountable?
That will be with the funds that we will be sharing with them to make sure that they go to improvements in the Village of Montgomery, which will also help other municipalities. So, like at the water tower by Sam's Club over there by Menards, that obviously helps Montgomery out that way, but it also will help other municipalities such as Oswego, Kendall County, and there, the fire departments in those areas as well.
Are there any contingencies in place should the lapses in coverage continue? Are there any contingency dollars in place to help solve those problems?
I don't think specifically there's contingency dollars in there, but they have been pretty responsive to the items that we've documented and forwarded. Again, it's important for our personnel to make sure we document and forward that and make sure we hold them accountable for it. But they have been responsive to that. Is it a perfect system? No, but we're working to make it as good as we can because, again, our safety of our officers and our residents is paramount.
Thank you.
And we're on the operations board?
Yes, sir.
For KenCom, which is, from what I hear, the important board to be on, because it's the meat and potatoes getting the job done.
Right. I would agree.
This agreement, how does this impact the cost for service that we're paying on, like the per-call basis?
Well, the, the records management software we have, we currently have to pay, Montgomery pays just for what Montgomery has.
Yeah.
They will be hosting the software, the servers and all that, so in that, we should see savings in excess of like $50,000-plus a year. I don't want to
Yeah.
Do the particular amount, but, but a significant savings each year. And the good thing is, you'll see, they detailed our costs out pretty well.
Mm-hmm.
So, in that regard, budgetary, for budgetary reasons, we can allocate those resources ahead of time.
And that looks pretty favorable. I mean, based on what we're paying, actually, it doesn't have in here, obviously, what we're paying today, but that price, I was trying to find that table, goes down
Yes.
For us every single year of this contract.
You'll see, it'll go down significantly because, like, they currently don't have all the systems in place. They're building them and working that. Once that's in place and we transfer over, that's when we realize those savings.
Yeah, but the, the cost structure for this, actually providing the service, that's not in this agreement, is that?
No.
That's?
The Dispatch Services Agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's in an amendment, but the same thing, the cost savings in there are very good for the, for the village.
Mm-hmm.
We've researched other alternatives, and that's our, our best alternative right now.
Yeah, okay.
And to Trustee Youngerman's point, you know, again, we can always look for improvements, but with KenCom, we know what we have. We know what we can improve, and we'll work to do that for sure. As we've looked at other alternatives, there's always that unknown, and that right now is gonna be something else that we, that we weighed when we looked at our options here.
Alright. Any other questions for Deputy Chief? And you're looking for approval of this
Yeah.
This evening, correct?
Yes, if we look for approval on this item.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
That carries 6-0. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on to item C, we have Resolution 2017-012, Approval of the Preliminary Plan of a Special Use for a Plan Unit Development for an Apartment Complex Located in the Ogden Hill subdivision, S.R. Jacobson and Edward Rose and Sons. Director Young.
Thank you. This is the second reading of the plan approval for the special use for the Montgomery Place Apartment Homes. You had a detailed presentation last time at your last meeting. Be happy to answer any questions. The second part of this will obviously be the Annexation Agreement Amendment that'll be coming forth in December.
Does anything in, that you plan to amend in the Annexation Agreement, impact their special use or their PUD, like land plan?
Does not.
Okay. So, taking action on this tonight wouldn't cause us any harm in the, at the next meeting?
At the last meeting, I mentioned the use of our, what's it called, crime-free landlord addendum thing?
Yes.
Will they voluntarily use that, or is there something, should we put wording into this where they, they are required to use that with renters?
There's been discussion between the chief and the attorney for the developer. They're reviewing our documents at this time. That can be part of the discussion with the Annexation Agreement.
To add on to Trustee Youngerman's question, a lot of times, established companies will have their own addendum specifically for that purpose, so I would, I'd be curious to know
I think that's what they're double-checking at this point in time.
If they have one already.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that's fine, but my only concern there is that ours is specially, it's catered directly to our ordinances and spells out the Village of Montgomery and has a list of things that you must follow. And if they have one like that, it's probably a generic, and I don't know if it would, it would have the same bite that it did if we had a specific one there.
I will, just quickly, Director Young is correct. Russ, who spoke last time, we've been in email contact, and they're gonna have an answer for me before the December 11th meeting.
Okay.
Also included in the crime addendum is the private property traffic control agreement, too.
Okay. So they, they have no problems with either one of these? They're just checking to see if, with their legal team?
Yeah, I, I didn't get anything different from the email. I think they're fully supportive of it.
They're just double-checking with their standards.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything new to report on the potential parkland property?
We're in discussions with Harts Homes regarding the property on the budding side, if you will, of the apartment development. It looks promising. The Park District's very enthusiastic about the idea of having land donated versus cash. So, I think that in one situation or another, there'll be at least a public park, and there may be a larger public park that would include a sledding hill that would be put in place with the spoils that need to be removed from the apartment development side over to the Harts marquee point side of the line. So, I think it's looking positive and that we could at least count on a park being in that general location.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Here.
And Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Thank you.
That carries 6-0. Alright, move on to Resolution 2017-013, in support of the Illinois Bicentennial Celebrations.
I can discuss this one. The state of Illinois was established on December 3rd, 1818, and so they are spending a year celebrating their 200th anniversary. They have sent us a bicentennial flag, which will fly below the state flag on the pole during the year, and they're having a statewide raising of the flag on December 4th. They're planning on having a number of other events during the year, and so they've just asked communities to adopt a resolution in honor of their year of celebration.
Is the flag here tonight? Do we get to see it?
It's up.
Did I miss it?
No, it's up in the, in the office. We have it up there. I did not bring it down.
No way to get it right now.
We'll wait till it's, we'll wait till it's displayed.
Alright.
The flag raising on the 4th.
Okay.
3rd?
No, that's Sunday. We're doing it on the 4th.
Maybe they could change it to the 3rd to coincide with our stuff.
Or we can call down and ask.
With the actual 3rd, which is the day?
Whatever.
Alright, any other comments?
Remember, just remember, this is the state that couldn't figure out a budget for two and a half years, so we have money to spend with this.
Is that a motion?
Still moved.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman.
Sure, yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And Trustee Heinz.
Alright, carries 6-0. Thank you. Item E, the Retirement Insurance Program.
Yes, we are proposing a one-time retirement program here that, for employees who have been with the village 20 or more years and are eligible to begin collecting a pension, the village would continue to pay the employer portion of the insurance for the lesser of three years or until the employee hits Medicare age. This provides some assistance to long-term employees who may be looking to retire. It allows the village to have some opportunities for promotion within our ranks, which, with our size, we don't often have that, that opportunity. And it'll provide, well, we estimate it won't cost the village. We think it'll provide a savings. It really just depends on who takes advantage of it. So, be happy to answer any questions. If approved, we would offer the program from December 1st through April 30th, so it'd be the, the rest of our fiscal year, basically, you would have to, to take opportu, you know, the opportunity to take advantage of the program, so.
This is a one-time?
Correct.
Is it not part of the HR manual? This is?
Yes, yes.
A one-time program?
If we wanted to propose something in the future, it'd be, we would come back with a different program.
Okay.
Proposing it again. This is a one-time?
We had something similar within the Public Works contract a few years ago?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Any comments? Motion?
Motion.
Second.
You got all that? Call the roll. Call the roll.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
And Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Carry six zero, thank you. Item F is a PSA with EEI for twenty seventeen dash eighteen water rate study update. Director Happenstead? I'm sorry.
Director Van Born.
The gentleman next to Director Happenstead, yeah.
He can talk if he wants to.
No, that's all right, I figured water.
Um, staff is requesting approval of the EEI, uh, agreement for professional services to complete a water rate study. Two thousand twelve was the last time, uh, a water rate study was completed. Um, the current budget included twenty-seven thousand dollars, uh, to do the water rate study and the agreement itself is at a fixed fee in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars. The study will consist of water use, water operation costs, capital improvements, water main replacement costs, and developing, uh, different rate options for the board to look at. Uh, if there are any questions, uh, either myself or Engineer Wallers, uh, could answer those.
Yeah, I have a question. For what period of time is this, about a five-year, Ben?
That's generally what we've been doing, uh, Trustee Marisak, is try to project for five years. If conditions change, if there's some large event that happens, then you might have to revisit them, but, um, that's generally been the, the projection range. In the past, we've also looked out to twenty years just to see if there's any large-scale projects that are being missed that we need to budget funds for. So, but normally it's a five-year horizon.
How does this interact with the intergovernmental, with the, our, our long-range plan that we've started down that path on?
Right. So I think what we're going to try to do in this case is, it, the one, excuse me, the one unknown is when we'll actually commence, um, the, let's say, really getting into development of the alternate supply, whether it's, um, the village doing their own, um, surface water plant or whether we have a consortium of communities that do a surface water plant. Um, we estimate that once you start, it's probably a ten-year horizon. So what we're, I think we're going to try to look out those ten years and project what that cost would be. We've got numbers on that already. Um, and then give you just a couple of ideas of if we, um, you know, keep status quo, you know, where would we end up? If we had to, in ten years, do a rate increase, what would it be? How would that, um, how would that affect us? Would we try to ramp up to meet that future demand and then, um, set aside those funds, those extra funds in the interim? You know, those are decisions you're going to have to make, but we would certainly look at that and then decide, you know, or mutually decide on what to do.
Thank you.
You sound like an entirely different person this evening, so hope, hope you feel better.
Already tonight by the mayor, so, yeah. One, one other thing I'll mention is we've been trying to update, uh, the water audits for the village. Each time we've, uh, addressed a, a, um, water rate update. And the importance of that is we've spent a fair amount of money doing water main replacements and leak detection and other things. And we want to see, um, and we know that we've had a reduction in main breaks and we want to see if we've had any, um, savings of water loss as well. So we'll be bringing that information back at the conclusion of the study as well.
So is this one of those, uh, contracts that, uh, that we'll be excited when we release you on this today, but when we get the results back? Because if we've really done our, our, uh, our best at reducing the amount of water we actually use in the village, you know, for residents, and so the amount of water we sell, if that ends up being a lot less over time, is the rate going to end up going up?
No, so I think there's two things here that you have to think about. If we're losing water because of main breaks, that's just lost.
Yeah.
Lost water, it's not lost revenue. If our meters are not reading accurately, that's lost revenue. So those are things that we will be considering. If, and then also included in this is some discussion on what's called demand management strategies. Meaning, that if we're able to reduce our per capita consumption of water, when we go to build a, a, you know, the consortium water plant or the village's, um, water plant, whatever it might be, it can be built smaller. So you have significant capital savings at that point. The system, the way it's set up is we bill by unit. Well, if you sell less, is, if people can serve and they buy less units, well, guess what? You're not getting as much revenue in the short term. So there certainly has to be a discussion as to how to balance that, because you have to pay bills now. But in the long term, you want to save on the amount of capital you have to build. So, you know, you wouldn't have to build the water plant as big and that's a huge capital savings. You know, the pumps can be smaller, all that stuff cascades and can be a, a big save. That discussion has to be had because what could happen is a person might use less water, but their water bill may stay the same. And people will say, well, why in the world is that happening? Well, the obvious answer is we're raising rates in the short term to cover our operating costs and our expenses, our CIP costs and things. But in the long term, there'll be benefit for the community because we'll be saving huge capital costs. So, but it's, you know, it's a reality, we have to generate a certain amount of income to make the system work. But yet if we can save some water, you know, per capita consumption, it'll save cost on the road, so.
I get you.
So we'll have that discussion and we'll show you what that would mean, um, you know, if we're successful. What I can tell you is that if, you know, what we've seen in, in doing these, um, studies for other communities is per capita consumption is going down without anybody having an aggressive water conservation program. Because, one, when new homes go in, they're, they're way more efficient in terms of their appliances and things. But also, in the older parts of town, when somebody does a rehab and replaces their bathroom or their kitchen, they put in more, way more water-efficient utility, or, um, fixtures, so low-flow toilet, uh, dishwashers are using less, washers and dry, you know, dryer, or washers are using less water, things like that. So the per capita footprint continues to decline, um, just by virtue of the fact that things are getting more efficient. Now, if we add to that a program that encourages conservation, then we may see even more per capita, you know, savings. But we have to at least anticipate what's happening based on our historical records. Because I think we're going to, well, we know, we would be fooling ourselves to not anticipate that we're going to see some water use going down. Because that's what we've been seeing.
Okay.
And there's other thing, each community is different. There's also demographic changes that happens, you know, new families versus old families and what parts of towns are changing and things. So all that comes into play, but generally, you know, nationwide, region-wide, you know, water uses per cap has been going down.
Awesome. It's good to hear. Will Jeff be coming to do that presentation?
Yes, we will be giving the full Freeman, uh, at, uh, like.
Funny, I was going to say the same thing, actually, so. I look forward to that, all right, thank you. Any other questions on the PSA for staff or Engineer Wallers? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
And Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
That carries six zero, thank you. Item G we have is a recommendation of the Montgomery Development Fund Committee on South Moon Barbecue.
Thank you, President Brawley. Uh, the Montgomery Development Fund Committee met earlier today and approved the recommendation, uh, to send to the board for a forgivable loan amount of six thousand two hundred and ten dollars. The amount may seem a little strange, but that was, uh, we received documents from the company that's going to be doing the work. And so that six thousand two hundred and ten is the number off of those two documents. If there's any questions, uh, I can answer those at this time.
What was the amount again, I'm sorry?
Six thousand two hundred and ten dollars.
On these forgivable loans, is there a criteria, like, has to be used for facade or have to be used internally? Or do we have to know what it is, or?
I bet Justin knows the answer to that, or Rich?
Yes, you have to know what it is. It's improvements to the structure, it could be facade, it could be, you know, external roofing, what have you. But it, there's no limitation to say that it could not be interior, which is the case in this, uh, application for. Um, the elevator has had problems for a number of years and they've tried to repair it. It, it needs some major repairs, they've tried to limp it along, so to speak. And so this is what it takes for them to get that up and running.
Very good, thank you.
Awesome. Any other questions for staff on this item? And this is the recommendation, the loan request is the next item.
I'll wait.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
And Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
That carries six zero, thank you. Item H is the loan request, uh, for South Moon Barbecue and the forgivable loan has a timeframe. I just wanted to be clear on that, that they have to be open and operating in the village.
For a thirty-six month timeframe.
For three, three years. Yep. Anything else to add?
Nope.
I like it. Any other questions, comments from the board?
I have a question. I know, I believe one of the requirements is anything owed to the village, or there can't be anything owed to the village in terms of like water bills or anything like that. I'm assuming that has been verified, that there is nothing owed.
Correct.
Okay. Um, I just want to make a comment, I'm a little hesitant to support this, just based on, um, what I've experienced and what I have observed of this particular business. Haven't always been very kind to our staff, to our staff, they haven't always been cooperative when it comes to Montgomery Fest. Uh, it seems like our staff spends a lot of time explaining things to them. And I don't really see where they have operated as a good neighbor. And I, I use that phrase a while back when we had the tree company that was not, um, observing the ordinances. And, uh, obviously this is not an exact situation, it's something that's very similar. However, that tree company, uh, was not basically abiding by what we were requesting on our ordinances. And then they kind of thumbed their nose at us and wanted to come in here and get something. So I feel like this business hasn't really, um, hasn't really figured out how to play nice in the sandbox with everybody right here in the downtown. And again, when it comes to village, I have seen the, the owner yell at some of our staff, uh, which again, I don't want to get into every particular, but, um, I'm hesitant to then reward a company that I feel has not been very cooperative with the village and the surrounding neighbors. So I just wanted to put the comments out there because I will not be supporting this.
All right, and to be clear, they, they haven't been in violation of village ordinances?
No.
That we know of?
No, and I was not implying that.
Okay.
I, I was just saying it was.
Yeah, that was a different situation than this one.
Something similar in terms of somebody who wasn't, I had used the term neighbor in, with the tree company and I'm using the term neighbor again. I don't feel that, um, this business has been, uh, a good neighbor, hasn't been attempting to be a good neighbor and really cooperate. And, uh, just, I, I just feel like there's been a lot of chaos when it comes to Montgomery Fest and the surrounding neighbors. So I'm not going to support it and I just wanted to make that clear publicly.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I got one quick comment, I should have asked this probably before the vote, but they gave you a bill on it, right? Of what it would cost to correct that? Uh, do we give them the money before that, or do we pay the bill? Or do you, we just give them the money and hope they do it, or what's the?
Once the, um, uh, application is approved by the board, then Justin and his committee will work out the details of the loan, how it'll be distributed.
Okay.
The actual loan agreement would then be put together by the village attorney. We'll work with the village attorney to put those details down into an actual document.
Okay, very good, thank you.
All right, if there are no other questions, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
No.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz? Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
And Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, move on to item I, which is the recommendation of the Montgomery Development Fund Committee for Linex linings. Go ahead.
Thank you, President Brawley. Again, the Montgomery Development Fund Committee met earlier today and, uh, approved to bring the board a recommendation for a ten thousand dollar forgivable loan and a forty-three thousand, five hundred dollar low-interest loan for a total of fifty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. If there are any questions, myself or Director Young will be able to answer those.
Will you explain the, what the two different money amounts will be used for, please?
Sure. The ten thousand dollar forgivable loan will be used for signage, uh, along Montgomery Road. And then the forty-three thousand, five hundred dollars, uh, will be used for equipment, most of it, uh, s, like spray equipment, uh, for spraying on the actual linings and, uh, so forth.
Thank you.
What are the repayment terms of the forty-three thousand, five hundred, how many years?
The, uh, committee actually recommended a five-year, um, loan. And the interest rate itself is, uh, based upon the LIBOR, uh, the LIBOR rate, it is a certain amount under that. And so that will be set at the time the agreement is put together.
But it'll be a fixed rate for whatever period of that five-year term?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions on the recommendation? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
And Trustee Heinz.
That carries six zero. Item J then is the loan request, uh, I guess which is both, which is both, right? The forgivable?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And that's the loan X, or, I'm sorry, the loan request for Linex linings? Any other comments from staff or questions from the board? Call the roll, please, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Hold on. Is there a motion?
Second.
So a motion and a second? Okay, any discussion? Call the roll.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
And Trustee Heinz.
And I just wanted to add on both of these too, that when we first envisioned a Montgomery-specific, you know, loan program that really wasn't governed by state regulations, and there's a, there's a pot of money that the state essentially gave to, to the village to do with what we want. Setting up this program, these two types of uses are exactly what I envisioned when we talked about this. Older buildings in our, in our downtown that need help, uh, businesses that need, that, uh, small businesses that want to expand in Montgomery. This is exactly what I envisioned on this. And so I'm excited to see, uh, two applicants come through so quickly, uh, so we can get this, um, in my mind, a large sum of money out into the community where it's, where it can do some good work. So I appreciate both entities and look forward to, uh, while working with both of you as we proceed. Thank you. All right, moving on, items for discussion, we have the Lakewood Creek refunding discussion.
Thank you, President Brawley. Uh, the village issued, uh, twelve and a half million dollars of bonds in two thousand and one at a rate of seven point seven five percent. Uh, issued refunding bonds in two thousand and six at a rate of four point seven percent. And, um, there is currently nine point nine million dollars of two thousand and six bonds outstanding, which are currently callable. Uh, the village has the opportunity to refund the two thousand and six bonds for annual debt service savings of approximately forty thousand dollars with no extension of the term of the original issue. Anthony Moselli from Spear is here to explain the process for refunding. If I could turn it over to him at this time. Oh, there we go. So what we'll be doing is coming back, uh, in early January at your meeting for you to consider a parameters ordinance. And what that will do is delegate authority to staff to move. And what that will do is delegate authority to staff to move forward with a refinancing of the two thousand and six bonds. These bonds will be a little bit different than what we've done in the past, as they're not general obligations of the village, they're payable solely from the special assessments. And, and for that reason, there won't be a, we won't be going to Standard and Poor's to get a rating on the bonds. We will be going and trying to get insurance, bond insurance, which will help on the cost and the rate that we'll be able to receive when we go into the public market. Once a parameters ordinance is passed, at that point, we're allowed to sell the bonds, assuming they meet certain parameters that you all agree to in the ordinance. What we're looking for specifically is a certain status target, knowing that we're not going to extend the term length of the bonds or increase debt service in any one year. The, most likely, we'll be looking at a minimum two percent net present value. Right now, preliminary numbers were about at a three and a half percent net present value, which is the forty thousand dollars per year that Justin had mentioned. Have to answer any questions about the, the process or the, the numbers specifically.
Will this result in a reduction to the residents that are paying these bonds back?
Right, that's what that forty thousand dollar savings each year would reduce the, the total that they're paying over the remaining life of the, you know, of the special assessment that comes to right around five hundred thousand dollars.
So when we put this in plain English, the people, the residents who bought in Lakewood Creek, the builder went to the village, they, we sold bonds for the construction of the roadways, gutters, that sort of thing. That's why the, the residents of Lakewood Creek have the special assessment. We can renegotiate, I guess, for lack of a better term, a better interest rate. So this forty thousand dollars, or whatever it may be, is going to be passed on to the residents of Lakewood Creek because they're going to have to initial, ultimately pay less.
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
The people that owe right now, the people that owe right now will pay less next year?
Because some people have paid theirs off, right?
I was gonna say, what happens, what happens to the people that paid off, and they're gonna say, hey, why did we pay it off in advance then if you're gonna lower the price?
The people that have paid it off, what they're paying off is the principal amount, and then they are paying accrued interest. So, if somebody pays it off today, they'd be paying accrued interest up until that date. They're not paying in, the interest over the remaining twelve to thirteen years of the bond, they're only paying interest up to today. So that's where, they're not gonna be paying any more or any less than anybody else, they're just saving money, interest, payment by paying it off now.
Okay.
People who prepaid have seen their savings because they cut off all the interest each of these past years. So they realize the savings already.
And they won't start to get a bill again, they're done. Yeah.
Correct.
And the, both of these, the twelve, twelve point five and the fourteen point two, what were those? This is really going back, but what were those for? I know this was the first development on the west side of town. Was that for?
That was for the infrastructure?
Okay.
In that development.
Okay.
The underground work, upgrading the road.
Oh, taking water to that side of town?
Right.
Correct.
And I believe that allowed the, the builder to sell homes at a lower cost, but there was, was a special assessment which was attached to that, which is kind of like a little mortgage, basically.
It's, it's another tax bill that we pay as a, as a separate tax bill, which is not tax deductible, like your property tax bill is. Because the money was used for infrastructure, it is not tax deductible, under federal guidelines.
Okay.
Consult your tax preparer for that, don't give that advice directly, but
I did.
I believe you are accurate, but we don't want to tell the public that that's the village's tax opinion.
Just mine as a resident paying it.
Okay.
The trusty Marisack do not represent.
And do we know how many, I guess, we don't need to state that, but I'm just looking for, what's the, you know, for, if I lived in Lakewood Creek, how much would I be saving a year? Not that it matters.
With approximately seven hundred parcels at forty thousand dollars a year, it's about fifty dollars a year.
Cool. But it's half a million dollars over, or almost half a million, over the next twelve years. All right. Sounds great, thank you, appreciate it.
And the, and I just, the cost for this is being paid for out of the fund, correct? Out of this?
Yes, out of the.
So there's no cost to the village for this?
All costs will be considered on proceeds.
Okay, thank you.
Justin, how many were there to start out with if he said there's seven hundred left? Do you know?
I believe there's seven hundred and forty out there, is what I was thinking.
In the beginning, or is it?
I thought that's how many houses were out, how many units were out there.
Well, I think there's seven, I want to say there's seven hundred and twenty-four single families, plus the duplexes.
Okay.
I don't know the number for the duplexes.
Well, how many paid them all off? I understand quite a few people did, am I wrong yet?
I don't know how many of.
You are not wrong, I just, I don't have those numbers in front of me right now. I can get those for the board tomorrow, I just don't have those in front of me right now.
That's fine, yeah, I'd like to see that, because
Yeah, we're not.
A lot of people said they paid them off, and when he said seven hundred, I all right.
All right. Thank you, thank you. All right, item B for discussion, we have the brush pickup program, Director Appelstedt?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I ask for this opportunity to discuss the village's brush collection program with you tonight. To give you a little summary, currently, the Public Works Department offers seven cycles of village-wide brush collection to residents between April and October of each year. The program costs the village, on average, more than five thousand dollars a month in labor, maintenance, fuel, and disposal of debris. Due to staff being pulled away from other programs to execute brush collection each month, there are certainly other costs, not quantified here, associated with programs that are supported through the use of overtime or subcontracting. Some of those other responsibilities include, but are not limited to, monthly water shut-offs, water distribution, sanitary collection, stormwater conveyance, and street maintenance. Additionally, tree trimming, mowing, street light repair, and vehicle maintenance are affected. I would like to note that the current program has not been adjusted, even though the size of Montgomery has increased by approximately two hundred and ninety-four percent over the last fifteen years, while the size of Public Works staff has remained largely the same through that same timeframe. Furthermore, as the younger trees on the west side of town continue to reach their full growth potential, this program could effectively double yet again over the next few years with regards to manpower, duration, and cost to complete. Based on some recent research, I could not find any other public agencies in the surrounding area that offer more than three cycles annually. Of the agencies who offer a similar program, most provide a spring and fall collection. Furthermore, this program consumes our chipper, chipper truck, and often the valuable time of the village arborist to perform work that the refuse company is now providing at an additional, at no additional cost to residents or the village. Respectfully, I believe it is my responsibility to propose the following options for consideration and discussion tonight. Option one, to eliminate the, the village's brush collection program now that the refuse contract provides this service. Option two, reduce the village brush collection program to spring and fall collection. Again, since it's now offered in a redundant form. Option two would, would cost us approximately ten thousand dollars in current year estimates. Option three, the, would be to continue the village brush collection program status quo. Again, current year estimates, that's a cost of about thirty-five thousand dollars a year, but would be expected to climb over future years. Any one of these options could be complemented with a special collection in the event of a damaging storm. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those.
And these dollar figures are salary costs?
Salary costs, fuel costs, truck time, chipper and truck maintenance, and then disposal of debris.
Yeah.
And the special pickup that you mentioned in case of a big storm, that's nothing different than what we do currently? If there happens to be a storm?
In, in my two and a half years, we have not offered one due to a storm, but we're offering it every four weeks. So, really, there's not a, a, a large amount of time that anyone would have to wait till the next scheduled. We could certainly offer a mid-season collection due to a storm if we were to reduce the program in size.
And what's the difference between the DC trash, what they will pick up versus what we pick up?
DC trash will pick up any piles of brush with no additional cost or sticker. They must be bundled with twine, they're not to be larger than two foot by two foot in diameter and weigh more than fifty pounds. They also must be cut to approximately four feet in length. The village's program has some pretty strict requirements, however, we find that most people don't respect those. In fact, over the past season, we've noticed many addresses in town where debris is generated from other properties, presumably outside of town. We know a couple of those addresses are running, you know, a mowing operation, so that it's, it's safe to assume that they're generating that debris at a, at a charge to a customer and then bringing it back to be disposed of at no cost.
I'm leaning towards option number two, I know that during spring and falls, when you should be pruning trees anyway, and I think that I'd rather have that safety net there in case DC trash, for some reason, can't keep up or has issues for spring and fall. The, if, if we're able to do this, or if we choose one of these other options, will that allow Ed to do more tree trimming?
That is certainly the hope. His equipment, we only have enough equipment for one tree crew, so his equipment is consumed regardless of his involvement during these brush collections. Typically, brush collection lasts anywhere from three to five days. At times, it may go into a second week, especially as those trees on the west side continue to grow. So, regardless, again, of our arborist being involved in brush collection, his equipment's consumed and he's not, he's not reaching his fullest potential. So yes, that is certainly the hope.
Or maybe even a hybrid of, hybrid of option two, where if you see that DC is able to handle the spring and fall collection, and we don't have to go out, you can have Ed pruning and that sort of stuff, but if, I like that safety net, even if we don't have to use it.
I, I tend to agree with you. It's my finding that residents are, are better served with a known quantity. So, I, I would continue to offer two regardless of DC's ability to keep up, if that's what the board so chooses, just so that they know it's there. So, during those two months, presumably April and October, there would be redundancy to DC's weekly providing.
You, you picked those two months because that's when the most in the past history, or are you just picking? Because it's, like he said, you know, tr- trimming in April and October, but do we pick up more in May and November, or?
Typically pick up quite a bit in April, only because people seem to be warehousing it throughout the winter months.
Right, oh, May?
However, May is a good time to begin pruning, and probably one of the recommended times. Again, September, October are the recommended timeframes for trimming. So if you did April and October, or May and October, that, I'm, I can be flexible with what months we select. Our, our biggest challenge is certainly August, as the current program conflicts with Montgomery Fest, which demands a lot of our time. So, you know, anything besides August, I think I could be agreeable with. But as, as, you know, Trustee Youngerman stated, spring and fall pruning is, is best for tree health.
I would think more May, which is the end, and Sept- or October, the end of September pruning. What, uh, maybe out in the west side, they use a lot of those trees that DC trash picks up. But, in the old section, I have never seen, I've seen the bags out, but I've never seen a lot of branches. I did see one today in Aurora, and there were four feet, and there were two feet. And the guy had like twelve of them out there, and all neatly tied. It looked like a professional tied them, and it looked like maybe he cut his backyard, and I thought, that's really nice. If some of us, we could do that for DC. But then I'm looking at my trees, and you come down with inch and a half trees, and I'm going, you know, how, what am I gonna do with these suckers? I can't tie them up, because like you say, it's over the weight limit. But I have more of that kind of stuff than my neighbors do, than those perfectly round, these were perfectly round, one inch diameter that, you know, exactly four feet, and what do you do with the odd-sized trees that are this way and that way with DC? I don't, I've never used them, so.
I, personally, I, you know, I don't live in town, and I'm able to bundle all of my prunings regardless of size. Some bundles are smaller because of the weight of those larger branches, like you say. But you can get rid of it, it takes a little bit more time. However, if we're still offering a spring and fall, I would, I would recommend to those people that maybe they just kind of plan for the, the collection cycle through the village.
Will DC take that many, as that guy had? I mean, does he have like one bundle, two bundle, or as many as you put out?
It's unlimited yard waste at no additional charge.
All right.
And we have seen, the, the reason for the discussion this evening is, is two-part. One, it's important for us to start planning and get those announcements out via the newsletter, the website, and some communications before spring sneaks up on us, I know it seems a long ways off, but those things will happen quickly. And, and the second reason is we kind of monitored, so DC trash began August first, and we monitored this fall, and we have seen quite a few people, even on the west side of town, with larger tree limbs, starting to take advantage of the weekly collection because they can get it off their property. Whereas historically, they've kind of stockpiled it either up near the garage or down by the curb where it doesn't look as nice. And it's, you know, it's killing off the grass or causing them headaches, so they've moved it along through the redundant program through the refuse company.
Awesome.
So, when budget time comes around, that extra twenty-five thousand dollars in savings, if we do that, could go to additional trees?
Well, it's, it's not as much of a savings because it's, it's largely manpower and truck costs. So it's not like we're gonna recognize the savings as much as we can reprioritize those man-hours to other programs that are currently being affected.
That's fine, I'm always gonna push for trees.
I, I understand.
Trustee Heinz, go ahead.
You know, I've brought this up, and this has been brought up before, and I've been in the past, I've said, we owe the village residents something, not taking things away from them. But I'm against letting, letting somebody else take our trash pickup and look at what we got in this, this other outfit that took over. I, I'm not happy about that either, so I'm just speaking my piece.
Thank you. Any other comments? Preferences?
I would
More information?
Make a comment on, I think the residents are used to the pickup, so I would be okay with reducing it to the, a spring and a fall, and perhaps as the trees mature on the west side, maybe we go to two in the fall, as that time comes. My other concern would be when we see the leaves dropping later in the season, then maybe we have to go to November to do that pickup, to do that last pickup. I mean, obviously, I mean, that's, that's something that you would make the call on that, but I just, I think the residents are used to it, so I wouldn't want to see it go away.
I agree, my, if, if you were asking me for a recommendation, I would recommend for option two, which is a reduced to two cycles. The, the leaf timing, the, the timing of leaves falling off the trees, you know, and, and trimming of the trees currently doesn't so much coincide. If we continue to see where fall conditions, as we've known them, are further or even staying consistent with last year and this year, I, I would anticipate that the landfills would remain open longer. Some of these seasonal businesses have kind of closed at a date certain because of what the typical has been. If the typical changes, then those, those dates may also change. That's what kind of inhibits- That's what kind of inhibits our ability to do leaf collection beyond November thirtieth, is because that landfill closes. So the two are separate. We can get rid of brush even in the wintertime. Although the village doesn't offer a brush collection program, we continue to trim trees and dispose of that brush, because that's being turned into a mulch product more often than being disposed of like leaves.
This is different than the leaf.
You're always gonna have leaves. They're never gonna fall at the same time period. Like, right now, pears are starting to drop their leaves, oak trees are starting to drop their leaves. It occurs over probably, what, a month and a half, I would say, starting with honey locusts and doing a river birch and...
Even more sometimes. The the pin oaks will hold those leaves until February often.
Is there a way to remove the leaf directly from the tree? Because all of mine still have, I'm just kidding.
We've made tremendous advancements in the leaf collection equipment. We could look at that.
I think really would save us a little.
Backing your car into the tree?
There you go.
Shaking it?
So that that's the the leaf pickup is a different program, obviously, from the brush.
That's what I was, okay, so I needed clarification because I was thinking leaves as well. So you're talking about just the stuff that's trimmed?
Separate.
Is what you're putting under brush?
Yes.
Okay.
So I like I like the thought process here that...
She does have a good point, because they picked my leaves up tonight. Okay, so I know you guys are working overtime. But we also came out and told everybody they they wouldn't be doing it this week. So people are calling me, and I'm going, no, no, they're out there. They're gonna pick up this week. Whoa, that's not what we heard. So I think what she's saying is, just tell everybody we're gonna go to December first and not keep this. Maybe we are, maybe we aren't. And we did that last year, and we were the only ones, and everybody else was picking up. So I think that's the case.
I I agree. And if I may, just, again, separate program, but since Trustee Lee has brought it up. With leaf collection this year, you know, we schedule those things so far and out in in advance so that we can publish them and make the community aware of when those collection dates are. We had scheduled for the last, basically, the last week of October, beginning with Halloween, and then the second, the sixth of November, and then the twentieth of November. We ended up adding that week in between, which was not currently scheduled, because that's when the heaviest leaves began to fall. This week was not scheduled and was never communicated to residents that collection would be provided. It was a game time decision this morning after kind of surveying the area very early and seeing how many people put leaves out over the weekend, that we just knew there was no other option. So it was not communicated that collection would occur this week. And as of Friday of last week, we hadn't planned for it. We decided to execute it today. But again, the landfill closes on Thursday. So there's no guarantee that we'll be able to complete the entire community. I've got my fingers crossed, but you're right. We were out again tonight. We'll be out again late tomorrow night until it's done or until we run out of time. That's the best we can do.
I think that's what Pete was meaning too, that you're taking away some cycles of brush, and you're really adding more into the leaves. But the people come back all the time and say, why do they keep cutting, cutting, cutting? And I think tonight is an example of we are adding for a change. But I agree that with Pete somewhat, we can't keep cutting these programs all the time. And and if you need more help, we'll give you more help. But, you know, you get the calls right away, and we're gonna get it on the brush too, just like we did the leaves tonight.
I agree. It's it's a matter of, you know, opinion. We we effectively have gone from seven brush collection cycles. By adding the DC trash contract, we could still reduce our program to two and be at twenty-eight cycles for the year. So we're adding, in my opinion. I know that's a difference of an opinion that some may hold. Same with the leaf collection. We were scheduled for three. We've executed now five. So we're adding there as well.
If you look at Republic, or Republic said the same thing. They would take that extra bundle of brush, little pile, but nobody ever put them out. But if Republic also had that in their contract. We advertised it more with DC now, and maybe that's why people are doing it. But Republic had it in there. Nobody ever used it because you guys were coming. So I guess that's the question.
And that's rolled into the price with DC, and people should be taking advantage of that. I see this as us tweaking the services that we provide to make the most effective and efficient use of our staff's time, as well as the contracts that we've approved, really to maximize that. So this, to me, is continuous improvement, improvement, tweaking what we do. I like to see us go to the the second option, which is the spring and the fall, you know, well-publicized, where people can put that out. At least try that for a year, and then we can reassess next year. If if residents were unhappy with that, maybe we need to do a better job of promoting those two programs and also the fact that they could put a little bit out every single week.
Well, and I think that's key, is when that publication goes out to, listen, you can do this every week with your trash. You can do this every week. But again, there's, my neighbor, I caught him yesterday bagging up all of his leaves, and I said, you know, today is the last day. This was on Saturday. Today's the last day. And he goes, no, they'll pick them up next week. I said, our garbage day is Friday. It's the first. You're gonna have all those lawn bags. You need to do them today before they come back. And he did, because it's just because of the cycle. People hear this week, but yet Friday is the first, and he's gonna be stuck with them. So he luckily, and I called Todd, the DC guy actually said, I'll take whatever you have. I'm gonna be in the area for an hour. Put whatever else you have out of the corner, and I'll make sure I swing by before I leave town to pick up what you have left. And that's the customer service that I see DC providing. That's beyond. You know, that was above and beyond. That was a guy on the street making a game time decision to service the customer. And I like that. I like to see that. So hats off to DC for that.
Yeah. So the direction I'm kind of hearing is that there's some interest in option two. If that's the direction I'm being given, we certainly have enough time to get that well-publicized between now and April or May. It sounds like May and October might be the preferred months of collection.
Stan, Teresa, Denny, have you guys all weighed in on this? Does that sound like something you? I know how Trustee Heinz feels on this, and Youngerman was, okay.
Just a quick side note. Do we provide any trash collection or brush collection or leaf collection for Boulder Hill?
No.
Okay.
DC trash is up in Boulder Hill, but not through villages' contract. There are numerous. I can't even count the number of trash companies that service the Boulder Hill area.
I saw a Boulder Hill resident complaining on the village website about trash collection, and I kind of, okay.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item C, we have a financial policy update discussion.
Thank you, President Brawley. Standard and Poor's suggested the village strengthen its debt management policy. When we last issued issued bonds in June of twenty seventeen, staff took the opportunity to look at all of our financial policies and updated. There is a summary behind the the board report that lists out some of the changes that have been included in here. So I won't go through those in detail. But the financial policies were up last updated in twenty fourteen. The investment policy was last updated in twenty fifteen. And then the debt policy, specifically because of the suggestion of Standard and Poor's, what used to be one page is now seven or eight pages.
Bigger text?
What's that?
Is it bigger text?
It's not.
Okay.
Triple spacing?
If there's any questions, I can answer those, or I can go into other, I can go into more detail if you would like.
This provides a better level of protection for taxpayer dollars. Is that what this is?
We're actu- yes. We're actually doing this. We're actually doing this. Most of this are ready. This is just putting it down into written form that's approved by the board.
We don't get a PowerPoint or anything on this?
I can certainly do that if you'd like.
No, no, thank you.
Trying to save you.
Okay. We're not looking to approve this tonight, but we do need to approve it at a future meeting?
Yes. It will be brought back at a future meeting, most likely on the consent agenda. I haven't heard any opposition, so.
Yeah, and did you talk about this at all during our audit? Or did this this kind of thing not really come up during the audit?
They look at our internal control policies, which is our financial policies are part of our internal controls. And so if they talk about internal controls or talk about the management letter that they issued to the village, that is where they're gonna talk about that. And they did not find any issues or problems.
It sounds like a lot of this we do as best practice currently. It's just formalizing it into policy.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to item D, we have a village boardroom AV system update. Justin.
Thank you, President Brawley. Many of the AV components in the boardroom were installed when the building was built in two thousand and seven. They've reached the end of their useful lives and need to be replaced and modernized. Staff does not plan to go into detail unless the board has particular questions. The proposal is included in the village board packet. Michael Decraine from ID Solutions is here. He's gonna introduce ID Solutions shortly and then answer any questions the board may have. Just one last point. The village staff, when we put the budget together, we did an estimate of what we thought it might be. And so included in the budget is fifty thousand dollars, but the total is more than that at eighty-nine thousand dollars. Because it's being paid out of capital improvements, the funds are in that fund anyways. We'd just be going over budget. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Michael and let him introduce ID Solutions.
Thank you, Justin, Village President, Village Board. Appreciate you having us tonight. Not gonna go super in depth, but we'll certainly answer any questions. I'm with ID Solutions. I also have Chris Apple here. He's our Director of Engineering. I am a account manager for the government education team. Company ID Solutions has been around since two thousand. We focus on visual communication solutions specifically tailored to the vertical markets that we work with. That includes government, education, K through twelve and higher ed, healthcare, and corporate. The underlying technologies oftentimes are gonna remain the same, but some of the applications are gonna differ. So we pride ourselves on being a small business, family-oriented company. I think we're like eighty people now, and just being a really good trusted advisor. We recently did a very similar project for your neighbor, the Village of Oswego. I came up to meet Justin probably two months ago. We've had several meetings now, kind of going over different options and scenarios to try to best fit some of the needs here that are specific to the Village of Montgomery. We have a four-pronged kind of approach for this particular room. That includes audio, video, or visual communications, and then control system, and then video recording. So of course, audio is gonna be like your microphones. We would replace everything around the the dais table here and then the floor at the table here, the digital sound processors that kind of tie everything together, has the echo cancellation and the mixing, the control panel, which was gonna be one probably somewhere in this range, and then one in the back control room. We're definitely gonna put a new high-definition projector in that's laser, so you don't have to like replace the light bulbs every couple of months. We have a screen that we inspect in that's going to be a company called Screen Innovations. I don't know if it's NASA materials, but it's like multiple layers that filters out sunlight and ambient light. So it really takes what's coming from the projector in its native high-definition and makes it pop as best it can for that particular format. The control system is gonna be something that's like forward-thinking and innovative, but just most importantly, easier for the operator. So it's just intuitive, not not a lot of buttons to push to kind of start the meeting and change levels and that type of thing. We have the installation services and the video help desk and the backend support to to manage everything. And I think that Oswego has been very pleased with the progress of their similar deployment to the to date. They actually did a case study with us a couple, couple of weeks ago. So with that said, Chris, did you have anything to say about engineering or help desk or anything?
Thanks again for letting us come in. I would say the number one thing, and he covered it very well, is basically you're going from an analog world to a digital world. You guys need to do that pretty soon. Whether you utilize us or someone else do that is a step you need to take. So we appreciate it. We can put together any details you guys would like. We can make ourselves available. Call us offline, email us, whatever you need. We'll answer your question for you.
I read this, and I'm not quite enough for sure. How long is this?
That's probably a twenty-four inch mic.
Twenty-four inch mic.
Something a little.
Well, yeah, but I've watched our, what do you call it, meetings?
Planning commission.
Planning meetings, and people sit back here, and you can't hear them. I noticed when he was talking, if you noticed, he was talking like this on that microphone. And I've always said that microphone is way too small. And as he talked, it really just, I mean, you you could see him leaning over. And anybody with height has to do that. So that definitely has to be longer. I don't know what you had down for that.
Well, this is actually a shorter microphone, but there's multiple, what they call polar patterns within the microphone themselves. Without getting into a ton of details, when you do a room like this that has a lot of microphones and a lot of speakers to help keep feedback from entering the room, the buzzing and the loud noises, you will put a very directional microphone in front of somebody that has a very short distance. Typically, we'll put a shorter microphone that has a little bit larger pickup range. And we utilize some of the digital sound processors that are out today that wasn't when you built this system, that will take the voice, whether I'm speaking from here or speaking back a little bit, and it will automatically gain the microphone. So whether you're close or far away, it sounds the same to the recorded audio and to the speakers and to the things that you might be streaming out to the internet potentially.
What size do you have for the front tables?
You know, off the top of your head.
They're on the directional mics that can be tuned and gated in particular.
How long?
They would be more like flat ones.
Those flat ones, we don't, you can't hear half the time, especially in the planning meetings. You don't hear anybody that's talking. You just go, what, especially if you're sitting back there. If you're sitting up at the top, you can't hear any of those guys on those flat mics. And I said that from the beginning too, and that kind of worries me. When you say that's gonna be shorter and those are gonna be the same. I know they can be louder, but I haven't seen it. Let's put it that way.
We can certainly demonstrate that if you'd like to. There's actually microphones today's age that we could we could put on the wall or in the ceiling that would pick up someone in a three or four foot area.
I guess that's your digital.
It is, it's much different technology today. Even though they might look very similar in nature, the actually physics behind them works much better.
Can we get something that's a little shorter? Because every time I look at this, I feel like I'm gonna get poked in the eye.
Well, that was where I thought he was gonna go initially with this, was they're very intrusive and they're very much in your way. So we definitely want to get something a little bit further out of the way, but that picks up the area well.
Yes, we do.
And does this include video as well? Sorry, my microphone was loud.
So we are updating the cameras for you, because currently, even though the the Sony cameras you have here are an analog camera, we're gonna update those to a digital camera, as well as update your projector screen. So basically, everything that you send out or you receive will be updated. And inevitably, we want to give you the ability to grow with this as well. So let's say down the road, you decide to introduce audio conferencing or video conferencing, something that into it. You already have the backbone for that.
Okay.
Does that change anything up there?
Yes, there will be some new components that will be put in the control room. Yes.
Okay. If we...
It'll be an all-inclusive system. I'm sorry.
Well, if we were to decide, a certain meeting might be well-suited for Facebook Live or an internet live presentation. Would this equipment accommodate that?
That's one component I did, I didn't touch on. We have a component that's called an encoder that basically takes a digital signal that has all of the video cameras and the compiled audio into one stream that has native, I think, five hundred gigabytes of storage, and then the ability to offload that to an external hard drive managed by the IT team or information technology team. And with this particular device, it's made by a company called Extron, it has the native ability to stream to both Facebook Live and YouTube. And then we would be able to embed that into the website as well. So there's multiple formats to be able to stream it out to your constituents and constituents and fellow citizens out in the community, just to get the...
I would add to what he says, that what we're providing is... I would add to what he says, that what we're providing is not proprietary. It's open format, so any type of media, it would work with.
So, to clarify, is that included in the package here then?
That is included, yes.
That's a plus, then, good. And I, one other comment I would make about the microphones. Here, it doesn't seem to be a problem, but if you're watching from home, and I'm talking to you, and I'm facing my microphone, if I turn and speak with a colleague, usually the sound just disappears. And so, they see moving lips, and that's about it.
What I would tell you is that I've done a lot of rooms like this around the country, and one of the reasons I wanted to come with Michael today was so I can experience what you guys' meeting is like in real life. We can set it up remotely, and what it would in general look like and feel like and how it should sound, but the reality is what happens every day. So, we would, we would come in here and we'd work with that. And when you guys first initially start your meetings, we would be here to do some live adjustments to kinda tune it in for you, if that makes sense. I actually do those things myself as well, so.
We have a surprising number of home viewers. I think maybe the excitement of being in the meeting is a little too much for some.
They're gonna continue growing as well.
Will this expedite the process of what we have to do now with, where it takes Debbie till like Wednesday to be able to get the meeting up?
Yes, as they just discussed, it will be live, it will be livestreamed. We will actually work with our IT consultant, and we'll actually store that on other media, not the server, but other media. And then, we can actually take it directly from there, put it on to DVD or what have you, and get it sent off to Comcast like we do right now, within a very short time period versus what happens now.
Is this something to do with the way this is in a circle too? Like, with Justin just talking, did you four in the back hear what he said? Clear enough? I mean, okay.
It'd be funny if they didn't even acknowledge when you were talking.
I know.
The dynamics of these types of rooms are very challenging, I'm not gonna lie. They're very hard, very circular. A lot of times, there's a lot of echo in the rooms. To get the sound at the right location's always a challenge, but that's what our specialty is, so.
Okay. I'm gonna ask this question for our AV guy Dale, who's up there right now. We were discussing this prior to the meeting. He's got an issue right now. He doesn't know which microphone is which. Can you label those for him?
We can certainly label those. We can go a lot further with that, as well as we can actually identify those in the program form, so they light up and tell him which microphone on the touch panel is being gated and seen. And we do that virtually almost all the-
Thank you.
-city halls and councils do like this.
Dale, I'm looking out for you, buddy.
I can label maker as well.
And where are you guys located out of?
Well, we're actually national. One of our largest companies we work with is AT&amp;T. However, we are headquartered out of Indianapolis.
Okay.
And we do have local resources throughout Chilwell as well.
Absolutely, okay. Any other question for them or staff on this item? And this is for discussion?
Yes.
We'll approve at a future meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You from Indianapolis or Noblesville?
Noblesville.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I think he's a closet Hoosier.
It's close.
All right. That'll move on to the quarterly financial reports. Again, Justin.
Thank you, Village President Brawley. The financial report, quarterly financial report for the October 31st, or six months through the year, is included. I won't go through many of the details. There are a couple items that I want to specifically talk about, which is state sales tax, which is still continuing to come in above where budget was. Income taxes, however, are under the budget, and that is part of the state budget that was approved that decreased the amount by 10% that went to municipalities. The other thing that I wanted to talk about, one of the other things I wanted to talk about was non-home rule sales tax. The state, as part of the budget, included a 2% fee on our non-home rule sales tax. And so, even though our sales tax, our non-home rule sales tax is coming in above budget, that fee is gonna reduce the amount that we actually see, and so, we're probably gonna be very close to even when we get to the end of the year.
So, the fee was, is also on the, the regular sales tax that we get as well?
It is not.
So, it's only on the locally generated sales tax that we send to Springfield. They charge us 2% to send it back.
As an administrative fee, yes.
Yeah.
That allows them to help with their celebration, correct? The state that doesn't have a budget or didn't for ten and a half years?
How about if we just don't send them the money? We'll keep our 2%. And just do it that way.
We'll visit you in jail. It's okay. So, is that a new fee, or did we always have that?
That just got approved in July for this fiscal, this state fiscal year, beginning July 1st, so.
So, what does that do to the future of the infrastructure improvement fund? Any sort of a ding on there that we should be worried about?
Essentially, we're coming in above budget on non-home rule sales tax, and so, this fee is more or less gonna offset the amount we're coming in over, so it should not have an effect this year, and then going into future years, we'll just budget that.
Sure.
So.
But the, the fee is included in this total amount that you show here? The fee has already been deducted in this bar that I'm looking at?
No, it has not been included.
Oh, we paid that out of a different?
It's included in that same fund.
Yeah.
So, we don't actually even-
We just get less money?
We get less money.
And so, this bar doesn't reflect that?
The August bar reflects it, the other months, because we're three months behind in getting state sales tax.
Yeah.
The only one that shows it is August.
I get you.
So, let me get this straight. The voters, we put out for referendum, a 1% sales tax referendum that's approved by the voters. They say they wanna pay the 1% sales tax so we can perpetually fund our roadway infrastructure improvement fund, and then the state says, "No, we want 2% of that fund because we want, we need to try and balance our budget." Is that correct?
That is a correct statement.
That is an absolute crock. That is what's wrong with our state. Just one of the things.
All right.
Other than that, I did include investment income. We are coming in approximately 58% through six months, which is good, and anticipate that at the end of the year, we'll be approximately 15,000 more than budget. As part of that, pages six, seven, and eight, in your packet, the last three pages, talk about the cash and investments we have out there right now. If there's any questions, I can answer those at this time.
Yeah, you have water operations, overtime in here. I guess, we're not looking at overtime in other departments though, right? Only water because it's in the water fund?
What I look at here is if something is over $25,000 and it's more than 10% over budget, so in this case, it'd be, since we're halfway through the year, it'd be over 60%. And so, you see both numbers, budget and actual, are over 25 grand, and then the percentage is at 68.4.
I get you. So, this means that other public works, Village staff, and police department were, didn't meet this threshold?
So, public works overtime on page two?
I missed that, that was at the beginning.
On discussion?
Oh, look at that. Okay. Public work streets overtime, okay. All right.
Of the four revenue items that are down slightly enumerated on page two, could you elaborate on why the video gaming tax is down, and why fines and tortures are down?
So, video gaming tax, we budgeted 69,600. Through six months of the year, we're at 46,000 or 66%.
It's actually over budget?
It is over budget.
Based on the, okay.
Right, we should be at 50%, and it's already at 66.
Nuance, right, that cheers me up.
I'm sorry, what was the other one you?
Well, it may be the same answer.
Yeah, the first three are all ahead of schedule? No, fines and fort-
Fines and tortures.
Is the one that's under, yeah.
Don't let the state know the ones that are above budget. They'll want some of that too.
We can give them some of the fines and tortures.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
Moving on to item eight, Newer Unfinished.
Oh, I have one. This is for Engineer Wallers. Do we have any update from the state regarding the Route 30 culvert as of yet?
Not at this time.
Okay. Just thought I'd check. Thank you.
Someone with a stronger voice repeat that?
Were you facing the microphone when you ta- I'm kidding.
We need to get Pete the big mic.
All right, with that, if nobody has anything else, don't wanna cut anybody else off. Go ahead, Denny.
All right, my Packers barely lost, but they at least did better than the Bears. But I am glad to bet any of these for Wisconsin, anybody that's playing there, I'd be glad to put up $10 against any of these other trustees that may like that red and gold, or red and green, red and silver, I guess. You can't even tell, cause they're all silver now.
That's called scarlet and gray, buddy.
Okay.
We'll do that.
All right. Sounds good. Future meeting, Plan Commission, has been canceled for the 17th. Our next Village Board meeting will be December 11th, and we'll go from there. With that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss litigation and, sorry, litigation where the Village of Montgomery fines such action probable or imminent, and also litigation which is filed and pending.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yeah.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
And Trustee Heinz?
Thank you.